Well, why don't we, why don't you go right into the budget? That's what we're here to talk about. So you might as well start while this thing, that's why I hate computers. It goes down at work, can't get it up here. Having a great day today.
Well, there are two things that I wanted us to focus in on. First is a calendar of events and deadlines that we need to observe in order to make a smooth budget season. The other one was the instructions to the departments so that they can start working on their budgets. And I guess the calendar is pretty straightforward. I'm asking that we start the budget season this Friday. We don't have to do it quite so soon with a deadline of January 29th, which is the day after the school committee.
Thank you for that.
Right. And opening the warrant with a deadline of February 13th. CPA deadline for proposals is the 31st. And we're going to have the CPA, scheduled the CPA to come in for the department head meeting so that they can give a presentation as to the application process, but also the kinds of projects that they have in mind that are high priorities for them, as well as the willingness to work with the departments in order to shape their budget requests so that they can be successful. This is something very welcome and it's a departure from previous years. So hopefully that will happen on the 12th. But the deadline for CPA proposals is December 31st, 31st. In past years, we've had an all boards and committees meeting. I don't know if that's something that you want to do this time around or how that fits into your strategy, your priorities.
Probably would have been nice if the finance was here so we could know how they would like for everybody to participate. I suppose we could put out what we would like. Certainly the major players, school committee and public safety. Of course, we're always weekly meeting, wherever we have a meeting, we're meeting on the senior and library, so that'll be certainly ongoing, but for our other DPW, so you know, I'm sure we get those things in place. We'd like to have them all present when we're doing the budget or where they want to submit their proposals first.
Well, last year, the way that you organized the budget is by divisions rather than departments. And we wanted to get away from individual departments within silos, building their budgets and not coordinating with other like departments within their divisions. So public safety, for example, covers police, fire, ambulance dispatch and building inspections. You all set goals for that division with an eye towards enhancing the fire and ambulance in particular. They were able to work very cooperatively together in order to achieve efficiencies, savings and bring the budgets in on target. So that seemed to work very well for you last year and that's something that I think that we should try again.
One thing, are we gonna, we talked about having a sort of conference committee, for lack of a better term, before the special town meeting where there are some differences in what the finance committee was putting forward and what the various departments were. Are we gonna do something like that so that way we can kind of eliminate some of these last minute issues like we had the staff car and things like that that came up?
Yeah. Well, and we also had, we thought the planning board were doing the proposals, their permits or the marijuana things, and they threw it back in our lap, which we hadn't anticipated that.
Right.
Yeah, that was, we can talk a little bit more about that later on. That was unfortunate, at least since the planning board at the public hearing for the warrant handled all the marijuana articles. There would have been a dandy time for them to say, well, this one we don't know anything about. We would have had to, we put that together.
Definitely a communication problem.
Because I just think we could eliminate some of the problems in the last minute changes and make sure that some of these must haves from various departments aren't being skipped over because people don't understand the need for them.
Right. And then everybody knows exactly what's in the budget that's going to town meeting so that they have an opportunity to
Talk about it.
Talk about it before it's just thrown out there.
Well, last year, you organized your budget by division rather than by department and it seemed to work very well for you.
I think it definitely worked better than the individual silos.
And it can be by division, talking with, yeah, that's the problem, various departments.
And the role of the finance committee last year was very much that they handled the budget, that they took it and if there's any areas of dispute between the finance committee and the select board, that that was an opportunity. That was where you needed to focus your energy. In past years, you've had the departments in front of you and then they had to go to the finance committee, so each department was presenting their budget twice. So it seemed to work very well last year that the finance committee took the departments and divisions and talked about their budgets and reported back to you. And if you objected or had a concern or whatever, then you would focus in on that area of disagreement and not have to worry about areas where you had agreement.
Did you have any concerns, Dr. McKenzie?
No, that did work out really well last year. It was helpful. Can I offer just something?
Sure.
Okay by me.
So just to use one of David's words, I was a little bit vexed when I saw the draft instructions from the select board, but I know that David's putting them out there for us to react to.
Exactly. Giving you something to chew on.
Right, something to action. So I went back and just recognizing that David and Christian certainly are new this year to this process. But I went back through my own archives and just tried to pull out some of the documents that we've had in front of us before. I don't have any, come on. And I know that this, I'm sorry. And I'm sure that this isn't 100%, it's just what I could easily put my hands on in my own files. But the data that topped September, I wrote in when we talked about things, so this was from September of 2015. I guess this is, you can have the song "How Time Slips Away" playing in the background here, but I was actually surprised it was 2015. We, that summer, I believe, had asked all of the departments to do the SWOT analyses and they did a tremendous amount of work on that. We all agreed that they did a fantastic job. That was when everybody was over at the safety complex, so there was a lot of camaraderie being built. And then coming out of the SWOT analyses as a select board, we sat down and kind of agreed on what the common themes were. So that's this first, that first page was just a kind of quick summary from that. Then in April in 2016, we put together, or discussed as a select board, a plan on how we could go about addressing a five-year plan and then put, you know, a process in place hopefully that would get us there. And again, this was just an outline, like the first thing on there was we're building needs, so clearly we know the end result of some of that, but building needs and public safety being priorities. And again, at this point, I think we've pretty well addressed the police and fire issues that we were talking about then. And again, we took a little bit of a right-hand turn with the building because of, we all know the story there. But this, this is what we had laid out in terms of kind of departmentally, what, where we wanted to focus time and energy. Service enhancements and staffing, just identifying areas where people were talking about wanting additional staff or, you know, the planning board function itself, what happens when they all retire. So those are, those pages. And then in May, right after that, we laid out a timeline where we were going to spend our time by month. So in the month of May, we were going to do this, June, July, August, September, October, leading up to the beginning of the budget cycle. And again, this is 2016. And then specific action items that needed to occur in order to make that happen. You know, talking about getting that wage study done, staffing analysis, we talked about forming a subcommittee, like a work group of some kind, the community compact initiative, which David did pursue on our behalf and has been very successful. So some of this has been done, a lot of it still hasn't been done. And then May of 2017, tried to summarize again kind of where we were. This was a conversation coming out of a tri-board meeting mainly between the finance committee and the select board, wanting to find out about, get ourselves educated, you know, but do some fact gathering around the override options, and that occurred. We did have Sandy Poehler and Terry Williamson. We had Joe Shea from the Hampshire Trust, Parker Elmore for the OPEB. So again, some of these things happened, some didn't. And then a year later now, this year, we sat down over the summer and we put together some select board goals, and the one I have here is just what I was working off of, but every select board member had their own goals. And I'm trying to, I mean, I'm reluctant to give direction to the departments when we ourselves as a board haven't had any time to really talk about where we might want to see some changes in the budget going forward.
Well, all this, I mean, if you could go back to 2015 and you work through it, there's been a lot accomplished since 2015.
That doesn't say a lot of this has been done, but there's still a lot that has.
Between a lot of, between public safety, I mean, that's been more than worked on. The library and the council on aging, that has consumed us for the past 15 to 18, for the past 15 to 18 months, actually. So I mean, we, you know, it's, a lot of these things have overtaken us in a lot of ways that doesn't leave a lot of time, you know, I mean, I think that we've done quite a bit in the last year anyway.
Well, I'm just thinking, the reason I brought these out was wondering, again, we've got two brand-new board members, so I'm sure have their own ideas about how to go up, go about planning process, but this is just a, yeah, again, this is just something that I had accessible to me from the past, so I'm wondering.
It's great to see it, but
How we can move forward.
Let's not be unrealistic that we haven't really had a whole lot of time putting out fires these past 12.
This isn't, I'm trying to find a framework for us to operate in. That's where I'm going with this. And I'm saying this, all of this, I think, needs to be updated and put into a framework that works for the current board.
Yeah, I would think that, I would like to see, you know, a schedule that we could kind of follow throughout the year, that's a framework, you know, because the cycle is relatively stable.
And do be realistic that there'll be breaks in the framework.
Oh, exactly. But to have no framework seems like, you know, if we had something that was like kind of a guiding document of ours, so we had, we could kind of schedule in time for strategic planning and setting goals and having discussions about these things would be great, I think, if we could adopt that as board.
All right, it's fine with me. I mean, I don't, certainly don't have a problem with, with setting goals and whatever, but certainly depending on whatever shoots out at us at certain different, different times, that our timeframe doesn't always allow us to, I mean, so you can only be stretched for so many things. I don't know how you feel about it. I mean, we've been, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we could, we could have some, we do have, I feel like we could make some time for some broader discussions and setting goals for things and trying to be a little proactive, you know. I'm not saying we have to tackle everything, but if we had some time to set a vision, I think that would be great too.
Well, we could always, you know, set forth a timeframe that you would like to, if you want to present a timeframe of what you feel we should be working on for the next year.
Yeah. I mean, I can, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, I think it would Combine everybody's spots.
This is obviously my first town budget because we came after the last one was already completed, but it may be too late at this point to really do a long-range plan for FY20, I guess. But at least setting up some different milestones and giving us a little focus. For example, if we were going to focus on, let's just say, schools or public safety or human resources. And address one department maybe every year, or two departments every year, so we can kind of more focus on, rather than just say, let's level fund everything and just throw it out, throw it out the way, so that way, you know, some people, we may have to give them that instruction, just say, plan a level funding, we'll get to you next time around.
What about the 416 where that was the five-year plan to address town needs? If we could take a look at that and see just what has been accomplished and what, make another list of what we, we need to do. Certainly some of these things have, have been done, but why don't we at least start from there and then add to it? You have an HR function, you know, those are things that have all been talked about in 2016, so why can't we go back to that list and see if we can eliminate what we feel has been accomplished and what else we need to now focus on and make that our timeframe?
Yeah, I mean, and that's why, you know, looking at the instructions here, I mean, the first, I'll say it on camera so people can yell at me, but this is not a recommendation, but David's first point is there will be no proposition two and a half override. I'm not advocating for an override right now, but if we don't know what the target is we're trying to hit, we can't really say that. You know, I mean, we don't want to just make that an absolute and put it out in front of the department heads when we're talking about, now what we might do is, we know, I think the vast majority of people, and just using HR as an easy example, has been advocating very heavily, and that our department heads feel the stress of not having a human resource function, so can they get creative and find a way to fund some portion of that?
Do you?
We, so we're grateful the town supports us tremendously, obviously, the treasurer's office and Joan. We are, it takes a lot of work, but we feel pretty good about our ability to recruit, retain, onboard, implement all of the aspects of the contract, so.
But then it's, then it's up to Joan or Linda to go through the insurances and
Correct.
All of that thing. So you can do one part of it in doing the hiring and evaluations and things like that, but then this side of it, we have the liability insurance, the health insurance and anything else that goes along with the hiring.
So the town does a great deal to support the schools and all of those functions. We do feel good about the things that we're able to do. We don't need help with supervision evaluation recruitment.
Correct.
There are things that the town is already doing.
But whereas the town does need support in those areas.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think just saying that, I personally feel like I'd like to see us have a human resources person on this budget. I think the town needs it and I think, I don't know the steps to get there exactly, but I know that we need it and we should be taking steps to get there.
Unfortunately, we have been talking about it for a long time and we kind of have put public safety out there as the number one for the last couple of years.
Oh, yeah.
And now, you know, we had getting them onboard and then all of a sudden, we've got the library and senior center sitting in our yard and, you know, that came upon us quicker than we thought it was going to, or both hasn't been too quick lately, but.
Just looking at, I guess, my area, the DPW, for example, from 16, those goals, we basically determined, and Marlowe had determined, that there is no need for a new DPW facility. There is no need to move or expand, you know, things like that, whereas focusing on license development and education and things like that, you know, we could be helping us out in a very important way for a couple of years in the future, but I mean, really, I guess we're kind of working off an old list still, so.
And that's saying that could be updated now for.
All right, we've added equipment and things like that down at the DPW since 2016 and.
Because to tell them to level fund everything we have, I mean, we're kind of just treading water and really we're falling further behind just based on the licensing requirements that we're having down there and some of the other issues, so.
So would that be the pleasure of the board then to work off of this list?
To update.
Yeah, so.
Update the list.
Yeah, so tonight, I did not expect us to have fully formed budget instructions for the departments. This is our first opportunity to really talk about them, which priorities may include for FY2020. Certainly, certainly we've invested a lot in education and OPEB and, and public safety. It may be that we need to focus in on some other areas, whether the VHR or IT or whatever it happens to be, or public works. All of these things are crying for some sort of attention. We have unlimited needs and we have limited resources by this to address those needs. FY2020 is going to be a bit of a tough year because we were stretched so far in FY19 in order to enhance the public safety, particularly the ambulance and some of the other things that happened and having to fund OPEB entirely out of stabilization fund. Can't do that again this year, so.
Can I make one suggestion that I've seen work in private sector as far as budgeting? If we could put the various departments on more of a cycle, whether it's a three-year cycle or a five-year cycle or whatever, and basically everybody knows that they can basically plan on a level of funding until it's their turn to ask for extraordinary needs or, you know, improvements or whatever. That way, we don't need to so much focus on the departments that it's not their turn this year. That way, we can actually devote the time instead of, and kind of dig into it a little more, because we can't, we can't do all of it every year as a part-time board, so.
That's exactly what, I think Guilford was the one who, I think it was Guilford that had suggested that back in 14 or 15, when the conversation first came up, and that was the idea, so we agreed on public safety. But then we hadn't agreed on what's next, so.
So we just establish a rotation of whether it's three or five or however many years, I don't know what the right number is, but that way we can kind of devote our time to what's important, you know, that kind of thing.
Have you hired somebody for IT now that Mr. Duffy's retired?
Yes, we have. And we spoke a little bit to David about what options might be available, but, so the school department is willing and eager to be helpful in any way we can to the town. This person will start, we have the next, I think. I did say that first and foremost, we want to make sure, this is the first year that all MCATs testing has to be done online. There's only one thing I care, there's only one thing that guy's got to get right. Once we're clear that that's right, we're open to talking about, you know.
Even third graders are online?
Everybody's online this year. Yeah, everybody's online this year. So, but we have spoken to David, we'd be open to exploring how, you know, if there's ways that we could share resources and support the town if we could.
Once everybody logs on to that test.
We have some other things going on for IT as well, maybe it's working with Northampton and regionalization and that kind of thing.
And I just wanted to know where, who did you hire, Anne?
Oh, sorry.
That's fine, David Olson, and he is, currently works for the Collaborative for Educational Services and actually knows MCATs quite well. So he knows schools well and he knows education well.
Congratulations.
David, you want to, just, Christian's bringing up the IT, you want to talk about yourself?
Yeah, well, you were taking the lead on this, so if I miss a point, then let me know, but about a year ago, you attended a meeting at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission having to do with sharing more regional IT and the city of Northampton has a Laserfish document management system, which is successful and they're willing to share. They have some open licenses and capacity that support us. So we had a very productive meeting last Thursday, last Thursday over Northampton with the IT department and we're doing the background research to apply for efficiency and regionalization grant through the community compact, which is going to open up until January 15th and close in February 15th. So we have document management issues galore here in the town of Addle, just being able to manage the paperwork that's around here. If we could go to a Laserfish system, which would include electronic retrieval and search functions, double backup, and I think that would go a long way towards addressing some of the clutter that we have here, as well as improve our ability to manage other important work functions.
I gotta ask, what is Laserfish? I know what Microfish is, but I assume it's just scan documents, is that what it is? Or is it?
Scanned in a particular way and I don't, I don't pretend to understand the totality of it.
So yes, there's scanned documents, but it strips off metadata so that you can enhance the insert capability, but it's, it's above and beyond like a Dropbox because of the metadata, we were talking about Dropbox, so it's kind of like more of an industry standard for non, you know, governmental agencies. It is very much public records request friendly. It is supportive of the concept of transparency, so in Northampton, you can choose to make folders completely public, so the public can come in and view things. One of the things that really struck me is that where they've had the greatest success is in the planning. So their planning board and building inspector were the ones who jumped on immediately because it was a way for them where they could just create a site location folder, you know, however they store things in the drawers down there, scan everything in, and then it's all in one place. And so I was thinking about everything we've heard from BuildWire and Jim Maximowski about
Moving everything.
Well, and it being on private servers and, you know, so they said that that's an absolute slam dunk if you did nothing else but just get all of those property records together in one place, it's huge. And it also has workflow functionality, so they freely admitted that they haven't really taken full advantage of it, but it does have simple workflow functionality with one of the examples being a permitting process, or licensing processes, so that if you, you know, Jennifer's the entreepoint and she starts something, you can create a workflow so that it automatically goes to the building inspector and then to the
Fire chief.
Fire chief, police chief, and then to the tax collector, so everybody signs off and it just gets revving around. You know, somebody gets an email saying you have, you have a permit waiting for your approval or input, whatever.
So a little bit like combination of Dropbox and DocuSign basically?
Exactly. They, they talked about actually the DocuSign process, I don't think, that it's up and running, but I think it's coming sooner, maybe they had it partially implemented. But the idea there would be grant money and I think, you know, we've talked about having an IT person, but in the absence of one, if this is something that we could get done through a grant, it's a subscription service, we don't have to worry about the care and feeding of it. People can access it through a browser, so we're not introducing a whole bunch of computer equipment that we need to take care of. And it would help everybody move forward a little bit, so even though the focus might not be on.
Any cost to it at all, did they say?
There's a subscription and we have the information, I'll tell you, I don't have it on me, but it's not significant.
Yeah, a couple of grand is.
A couple thousand dollars, I mean.
For what it can do, it certainly would be worth it, wouldn't it?
Cheaper than a salary, that's for sure.
Exactly. Yeah, so at least we'd be moving the ball forward from an information technology standpoint and it would be a benefit to everybody so that we could then hone in on the critical issues within the DPW's department.
Sounds good.
Got it right at first.
I was just remembering, I was going to give you that guy Mike's name, I was going to see if I can find him on the internet.
All right. Just a couple of clarifying questions on the deadlines you put out, is that all right? Just, all right, so I have twelve twelve CPAs presenting to department heads, twelve thirty-one CPA proposals are due, one twenty-nine budgets are due to you from all department heads, two thirteen is the deadline for submission of articles for the town warrant. So much that thinking on the school side, I am, I'm assuming that the process is still, the town is operating off of its multi-year capital planning master plan? And that we wouldn't, departments, so correct me if I'm wrong, departments would not just be kind of arbitrarily submitting warrants because the town is somewhat directing folks to say, you know, this is our long-term plan and this is, we're putting together a warrant that aligns with that plan. Is that correct, or should I be telling the school committee, hey, what do you want to buy in May? And so, what direction should I be giving the school?
What you, what you normally would put on town warrant, so if, I mean, for that spring town warrant, if it's a major article, then we would have to, you know, do, we could do a placemark for you.
Yeah, I guess what I'm asking, and maybe I'm overthinking this, I thought the town, so we have this longer-term capital plan, and I thought that the point of that, and I couldn't even assume, I had the point of that, was to kind of organize what is submitted for town warrant, and I just want to make sure that, that I'm understanding that.
Yeah.
That's me, but we could do the capital committee in, you know, in January, I guess, and see kind of where we're at and if there's anything new to that plan and kind of solidify it, because I know there are some, you know, there are some purchases coming up in capital. The one that sticks in my head is the generator at the public safety complex. That was slated for twenty twenty, so I don't know what else you guys were planning. I don't remember anything.
We're reviewing our, so regardless, part of our preliminary budget talks and regularly throughout the year, the school committee looks at the capital plan, but the reason we would look at it now is to look at our capital plan and that larger town plan and say, okay, what do they expect us to be putting forth for the warrant? But I just wanted to make sure that I was, I had the right operating assumption here.
So what we have been trying to do is, we're trying, in the past, we've tried to put together an operational budget for the annual town meeting and then a capital budget for the special town meeting. Capital plan gets updated during the summer time, because that way you can use recurring revenues for your operations and one-time money, free cash, et cetera, for the capital purchases in the, in the fall. We haven't quite got there, but that's what we've been trying to do in the past couple of years.
So that's helpful, so then we wouldn't be looking, what's on that plan FY twenty is not, we're not worried about this deadline, but I mean, large town capital plan includes the school's priorities, it's already gone before the capital committee. That we're not, we're not trying to submit those for February thirteenth, it sounds like that is what goes at fall time.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's...
That's what we've been doing.
Okay, all right, that's...
That's the way you've been doing it, and that's when the money is going to be most available during the spring town meeting for capital purchases, not spring town meeting, fall town meeting.
But, I mean, we could review it and just see, you know, based on our projected purchases, you know, in this coming year, where does that fall in the budget? You know, just look at it and try to, I mean, the more we can update that plan to have some projections would be great in my mind, but.
I don't want to create work, I just want to make sure I don't miss anything.
We could see what the list is.
Yeah, yeah, I was just looking, I don't think I have an up-to-date list because it doesn't have the cafeteria upgrades on there, but I could look and see what I have. Did we fully fund everything that we approved at the special town meeting as far as purchases?
We have to go for the override vote, which is...
December eighteenth.
December eighteenth.
Then they, Hopkins Academy. I'm sorry, there were a couple of capital items that we did not fund, just didn't make it.
I think the other thing that would be helpful too is if the schools already know that there's some sort of a gap or a need that you're trying to figure out now how to address and you think it's going to be a struggle, the sooner that we know that, the better too.
So what we'll do on December seventeenth is say, if, if materials and supplies were level funding and people were level serviced, right, it's a level funding people's actually cut because of step and landing changes. So if we did that and if nothing changed in special education based on what we know right now, and special transportation related costs, and nothing changed in vocational education, this is the impact to FY twenty, which, so still, we're very much in December seventeenth in fairyland, right? That's like fairy tale, that's probably not going to happen, that everything we're getting is completely frozen in time, but that's our starting point. And then, we try to get a lot closer, but we're still typically in January and presenting you with what we would assume would be the most challenging scenario in January. And then, as you know, as figures come in around revenues and certainly, a big deal is April first, because April first is the within and out cutout cutoff for special education tuitions. So as we progress and we know more, and as we know more, then we give that information to FinCon or Select Board or wherever we're supposed to give that information, we give those adjustments.
I'm thinking more along what, like, you know, unfunded mandates, I mean, because you're in it every day, we may not be aware, like, if there was some sort of law change or some initiative coming down from the state that was going to be a new challenge to schools.
So the biggest thing that we face, which then gets passed on to what the town faces, is when, so we know that the preschool grant will no longer be funded next year, it's gone down every year for the past three years. We submitted for our health grant, that has been supporting one of our immersed salaries, but that grant has ended and we just submitted to the A for competitive cycle, that's going to be very competitive because it's really, it really favors large urban districts, which they want the money used for. So we would put, we're also in our first round of assumptions, we're going to assume that we're not getting those grants. That changes, I mean, much rather under promise over deliver.
Yeah, I think that's the worst case.
Right, so we're going to assume we're not getting those, we're going to assume that Circuit Breaker is not going to be funded, it never has been funded at the rate that it's supposed to be funded at, we're going to assume it's going to be funded at a low rate, and then if we can take that up. So those are the big ones, it's grant funding.
The charter expansion could be problematic if it were to go through, because, I mean, again, it's in our backyard, right? So, there's just hopes for us to have that.
That will be the picture that really you get on the twenty ninth, and that picture doesn't have a lot of detail in it because we can tell you all the assumptions that we built off of, again, staffing's the same, so we moved people in accordance with contractual obligations, we've made these assumptions about special education, we've made these assumptions about transportation, these are all the assumptions that we've made, and that's how it gets us to this bottom line. Here are all the pieces that could move, and we'll try to make those assumptions, worst-case scenarios, these are all the things that can gently move in our favor, right? And then we just pay attention to the budget that comes out of the state, how they're going to fund Circuit Breaker, things like that.
Is there any movement on the whole funding formula conversation?
Well, the challenging part, we're talking about that at the school committee and then a lot more in January, so I think that there is a commitment to look at, obviously, they've already looked at foundation formula, I think that there is a commitment to maybe implement some of the recommendations, but unfortunately, if they implemented all the recommendations, four out of every ten districts would not receive an additional dime. So even implemented, it doesn't, it doesn't benefit everybody, it certainly doesn't benefit everybody equally, so.
Nothing ever does, doesn't it? No. It's the bigger cities that usually get the bigger chunk.
Yeah, but we will, we're giving it all in that.
While you're here, do you want to talk about the charter school expansion of the little bit of safety, and then as far as passing on from the school committee, what they put out as far as...
Sure, so the school committee decided to, the school committee wrote a letter, also the Collaborative for Educational Services board of directors, so we are a member of that and one of our school committees sits on that board as well. They also, they should have a letter. The, I'll speak more about our school committee's letter, our school committee always says and they do completely respect the rights of parents to choose whatever educational options that they are best for their children. So we certainly are not, we're not disputing a parent's right to make that decision, we support that decision. The school committee did point out that in, that the application, in some cases, the state, just like they set targets for us, the state has set some targets that, in fact, the school hadn't met, so questioned whether or not that an expansion should be granted based on that. But the biggest issue, and this is a little challenging because it doesn't really go to, it doesn't, it's not necessarily the grounds upon which the state would make a determination about approving an expansion, but the school committee did point out that, just like Circuit Breaker, the charter reimbursement formula to towns has never been fully funded. I mean, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, actually, when I do the budget packet that the Select Board and FinCon will see, I do do a chart every single year, what the town should have received in charter reimbursement and what it actually received. And so, we do struggle with the fact that there is a push for expansion on a model that the state hasn't figured out how to make good on its initial promises of holding harmless the towns that would be most negatively affected by this. And that, that's the biggest issue that our school committee has in general, is the funding.
They asked for comment by, I think it was December third or something like that, so do you have any sense that Desi's going to roll on it or?
I can find out for you, if the camera could pan to somebody else, I went down my way. I can find out for you, but I think, I want to say that they were planning on doing it at their January meeting, but...
Okay, so if they're going to move fairly quickly, then I think it's, I believe it was at their January meeting.
And I'm sure every year at the MMA meeting, they have something about School Choice Two or dedication, they'll have a seminar on that.
So the finance committee, I didn't happen to catch their last meeting, was there anything that came up at their meeting that we should be talking about for the budget process?
Chris, you were there, so, I guess, they were very interested in IT, very much interested in HR, committed to exploring how to enhance those functions. I think there was a third thing.
Well, they were talking about the school budget a lot, and they were talking about municipal building committee for a bit. I guess one thing municipal building committee would like to have a maintenance budget in the budget to do building maintenance and possibly have that be something that would be a rollover type fund, so, say, a rollover type fund, I'm sorry, thank you. Where there would be, if you want to paint town hall, you know, you could wait a couple of years and build up the fund and then have a kind of a big chunk of money to paint it, those kind of projects, something, I'm just putting it out there. Don't kill the mess I'm making here.
Said that before.
So anyway, that was one thing that was talked about. And then, yeah, I had mentioned, you know, HR manager, IT, finance, something along those lines and how that would go. You know, they mentioned in the past, like, with the ambulance, there was a committee to come up with that. They're also kind of just in favor of maybe going for, you know, having these positions since it's, we've talked about it for so long, eventually, we have to pull the trigger on, it would be good to just pull the trigger on something and do it, so some talk about that, but there's interest there to do something.
All right, so I did find, no, earlier than December eighteenth, no, later than February twelfth, the department, the Board of Education will make its determination. I don't have the exact amount, but I did find a table that I was referring to, David, that I typically put together, just to give you a sense of actual versus owed. So in FY fourteen, the town got about ninety-eight percent of what was owed under the reimbursement formula, but then in FY fifteen, the owed charter reimbursement was about one hundred eighty-six thousand, the town got about one hundred thirty-six thousand. In FY sixteen, this isn't cumulative, it's each year, in FY sixteen, the town was owed one thirty, one hundred thirty-four thousand, got about sixty-four thousand. In FY seventeen, owed two hundred two thousand, roughly, I'm ramping on this, received about one hundred twenty-one thousand. In FY eighteen, owed two, two hundred forty-five thousand, received about one hundred nineteen thousand. FY nineteen, owed one twenty-seven, one hundred twenty-seven, received about thirty-eight thousand. So each of those years gaps and add them together, that's nothing the town failed to do, that's across the board, the charter reimbursement wasn't funded, fully funded, just like regional transportation, just like Circuit Breaker. So this was, this table is actually in our school committee's letter saying, come on now.
But we're making up the gap, basically, so.
But we've been saying, we've been saying that from the get-go with School Choice. I have to say, I was the last member, the dying breed to vote over School Choice, I just couldn't do it. I consciously, conscience, with my conscience, I could not feel that it was fair, I didn't even think we should be doing it at all with any schools.
And I want to clarify something, that that isn't just a gap to one charter school, that's, that's a gap to all charters, I mean, the majority are forming arts and Chinese immersion, there's a couple others, there's four, ten that our kids go to, but that's the total gap of all.
All right, anything else for our by-board tonight? So what are, what are the action items coming up, who's doing what in my...
So I've put onto your agenda for next week, continuation of this discussion, you all want to put your notes and thoughts together and come up with a unified plan next week?
Can I come up with a draft kind of cycle of departments and, you know, some various options for three, five, seven years and then we can, or if that's what you want to do?
No, I have no objection to this.
I'll be the bad guy.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to work off of what we had here.
Right.
And just to move forward, I think that would, that's a start for us to work on. Not over seven years, excuse me.
I was looking for a clarification, when he was going to, are you updating this document? Are you, you talking the budget cycle? No, I meant the instructions where we could tell all the, all the departments that it wasn't there here, that this is your level funding year, and then going forward, you know, this is town hall, you know, whatever, yeah, and then I think someone else can do the goals. Yeah. I mean, I can work on the, I could take this and work on putting in some new goals, I was also thinking I could, maybe not now, maybe not for this, but also just working on the calendar, kind of framing what we do year-round and trying to set some dates to when those decisions can be made or when we should be talking about certain things and prep for that.
And then maybe our respective liaison positions, so we can give you feedback, you know, I could do it for town hall, general government departments, Joyce Public Safety, because, again, this is dated, and if you want any context on, like, something doesn't even make sense to you, send your book or you just call either me or Joyce, we can fill in the blanks.
Yes, I can save my calendar, probably have a lot of gaps in it because I don't have enough experience, but I can try and put something together.
Yeah.
So one place to go would be the budget document, or the budget calendar, so there's a certain legal deadline, so we have to return, but that's a good place to start.
My final, kind of, kind of broken record on this, I am going to say to the school committee when looking at capital plan, and when they ask a logical question, should we be putting these things on a law article for May? No, this capital plan, fall time meeting.
Great.
However, it would be nice to see your capital plan, so we could update our spreadsheet and put it in there, so that we can get a feel for what it looks like.
Absolutely, it hasn't changed, it hasn't changed since the last time Chris was in front of the capital committee, but I'm happy that what goes in the school committee, after our school committee meeting, I don't think they're going to change anything, I'm happy with that.
So here's, here's a question, some of your capital upgrades can happen during the school year, but some of them, particularly the ones involved in building renovation, should take place during the summer, do you see anything coming up this summer that you're going to need?
I feel like a, a big thing that's coming up will be, I can't remember when we have to buy a bus.
I saw in there real quick too, parking lot resurfacing, Hopkins Academy parking lot resurfacing, was in for 2020, the one I had, I don't know if that's.
One conversation we did have about that is if we can get some forward motion on the fields, it would make sense to do that probably around the same time.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, that's somewhat connected to that.
Yeah, yeah.
And where's the fields in the, in the realm real quick?
So the fields is, one is already passed, which we got support from CPA, and then another phase, I want to say is two, maybe two or three years out? Are?
Yeah, this, the one, this spreadsheet I have doesn't have it in, in there, but.
Okay, all right, I'll make sure after.
It wasn't, I don't know what happened to the one that I had, that should be newer, so.
No worries, we'll talk about it in December and I'll make sure you have a nice, beautiful update on it.
Thank you. All right, and I think that probably does it for our tri-boards.
So, just to be clear, I'm not sending out any calendars or instructions until next week.
Until we're ready.
Until you're ready.
Hopefully by Thursday, you can pass it.
After our next meeting. After our next meeting. So, we're not planning on this timeframe and things like that at next week's meeting? It'll probably be the meeting after, or do you think that you'll have something for next week?
Our next week is the May, May 12th.
Well, that's a short.
I'll probably come up with a list of goals.
I was trying to put up something, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's what I, I think I'll focus on the goals first and then work on the calendar and see where it all comes up.
Okay.
Personally.
Personally.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Come on, still, you're there.
All right, so.
Did you just call you weren't done yet?
Oh, I wanted to get that.
Can I suck a drink?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get off this page here.
Thank you, friends, good to see you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Always a pleasure, honorable.
Oh, maybe we should have talked about that because that was, uh, something I had received in the mail, was a proclamation request, uh, to, requesting that you consider joining dozens of city and county leaders across the country in officially recognizing January 20th to the 26th, 2019 as School Choice Weekly Week in Hadley. And, uh.
So, my God.
We had talked that would, that would be a no.
I would like to recognize it, as a lot of people have many, many children in New York, I would like that week, is what I would like. Have huge families in New York, let's do that.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I just made one, made sure you knew that this was given to me, but that, I don't think you would be acting on.
Motion that we pass.
Thank you. All right, all favor. Aye, aye, thank you.
But it, it was addressed to you, honorable, so I'm now calling your HJC.
I guess they really don't know me.
Hey, Jason.
It's honorable. Thank you guys, thank you very much. Okay, let's see if I can get off this page. I don't think I'm on that one.
Hello, friends.
Yeah. Should I, can I open here?
The four dark slots.
This, which one, this one?
Could be that one.
Yeah, no. Okay.
Yeah, did that one?
No. Let's go to this one.
I'll say the last thing.
I had a, died with a debate.
Do you want somebody to read the consent agenda while you're looking for it?
Go for it.
I might just under dispatch. Someone's gonna be yelling, we don't have to yell at you that far.
All right, so I'm, uh, moving forward into the regular select board meeting. Is Pinch getting there momentarily for the chair?
I'm gonna use his, I like, yeah.
So, minutes of September 12th, 2018, this is the consent agenda for approval. Uh, there are no warrants. Hadley Police Department policies are being requested for approval, everything from automatic emergency defibrillator policy through to health and fitness policies. Hadley Police Department fee implementation, this has to do with tolling fees and general license application for commercial use. Uh, there is a dispatcher appointment and we will just hold that for the end, when our Hadley police officers will address that. Uh, there's a request for a one-day liquor license, December 8th and December 15th, for, to be held at D1 Vodka for a cancer fundraiser promoter to Steph's Wild Ride. Uh, one-day liquor license for Western Mass Climbers Coalition to be held on December 14th at Central Rock Gym. An inter-municipal agreement to be ratified between the Veteran Services between the City of North Kansas and the town of Hadley, which is an existing contract. Moving that forward. And then cancellation of an IFB for a septic truck through DPW. Oh, who's pulling back?
Were you here to talk about that?
I had a, I had a question for the police. I have a question on all the policies. Is the chief out there?
Right here.
Oh, oh, there you are, hello.
Hi.
I knew I saw you go by the door, I didn't see where you sat. So on your medications that you, on your policies of the EpiPen, um, are we carrying EpiPens?
No.
No.
No, with the, uh, the AED policy is an update, and the EpiPen we have training in.
Yes.
Uh, for officers to use them in the event that they must, but we're not gonna be carrying EpiPens. It's just part of the protocol as we move forward in 21st century policing, that it's something that we want our people trained in in case we need to use it.
I just know that they are expensive.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We're not, we're not gonna be.
And so that was my, the dollar signs went up in front of me, so.
You know, we would love to, but that's, you know, part of the issue, and we just want to be, we just want to make sure that everybody knows how to use them in the event that we run into a situation where a parent or a teacher, um, you know, is too stressed out to be able to, to apply the, you know, the medication, that we want our, our people to be able to do it.
Okay, and I did see that on several of the, um, policies that, uh, it's in coordination with the ambulance and chief's bank enable.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. We actually, um, with the AED policy, we actually do the training, the fire chief actually does the training for, for both police and fire.
Actually, it should come with the CPR training?
It does. First responder, CPR, AED.
Correct. And high.
And I, I do have a question for D1 Vodka. So, it looks like you've coordinated those two dates with the council on aging.
Mm-hmm.
What about the library?
I didn't have to library.
Okay. Um, could you do that too, just in case they have an event going on? Doesn't it usually try to happen coordinated for?
12, 6, 12, decide.
Sounds good.
So, I'll make a motion to approve everything if we're pulling out the, um, dispatcher.
Okay. Any further discussion on them?
I'm just subject to making sure that's cleared with the library.
I just cleared with the library.
Perfect, sounds clear with the library.
Sounds good.
We share part.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, and then we could have the police chief do the dispatcher appointment, please?
Yep. So seated, uh, next to Mitch is Ms. Barrit Bayakadal. Uh, we call her Bee. Uh, she's known as Bee around the station. She is currently a full-time EMT with Action EMS and also works in their dispatch center. She graduated from Smith Academy in Hatfield and from UMass Amherst with a bachelor's degree in anthropology. Previous to working for Action Ambulance, she also worked for National Ambulance as an EMT and a dispatcher, and has previously worked for YMC Camp Dakota in Richmond, New Hampshire, Rock Ridge Retirement Community, and Linda Manor Extended Care, all of which enrolls, she worked with people of all ages. She comes highly recommended by her supervisor at Action EMS, who describes her as a fast learner and a quality employee. With her familiarity of the town, employees of the police and fire department, as well as her previous experience, Bee's training should go very quickly. Uh, she will have to attend a 40-hour basic telecommunicator certification class, 16-hour state 911 class, and our department's standard on-the-job training. Um, it's with these, uh, these facts that I would recommend her to be appointed as a part-time emergency dispatcher for the Hadley Public Safety Complex.
And what shift?
It's gonna be part-time, so it'll be.
Any shift?
Correct.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
Motion to adjourn the appointment.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Bee. Still working for Action Two, yes? Yes. So we'll see her in several.
She's not gonna have a personal life by the time we're done.
Great, welcome aboard. All right, that takes that for Bee. Consent agenda. Guess we would go for public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening? None, none being? All right, I'll move on then. I'm gonna pass over you right now, David.
That's fine.
And since we have, we'll go to, we, we have taken off the continuation of the public hearing that was settled today before the meeting. We will go to the municipal building committee, coordination of building projects, senior central library, and fire, fire substitution. Welcome, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Finally, we got everybody, got the messages, so it's good to have you. So I guess our, our goal on this is to have your input, um, since we're moving forward with our projects, on the timeline of coordinating and doing both projects at the same time. So we just wanted to touch base with the municipal building committee, and we're, of course, going to need to put people in different places and different spots, so, um, any thoughts on?
Uh, yeah, we, we can go over some of that. Uh, you know, as, as everyone was kind of anticipating this, this approval, we didn't advance a lot of, uh, new things in our committee, but we have had discussions over a couple of items of late pertaining to, uh, the Goodwin Building, the Russell School, the parking lot, uh, and the possibility of bidding the two projects together as a single bid. Is there a specific, um, discussion item? Where would you like to start exactly?
Well, I guess the timeline of doing the two projects at the same time.
Sure, sure. Um, I, I think it probably, it was, it was a discussion item that was, that was, um, a couple of meetings ago at our municipal building committee. I was not able to, to attend that meeting, but a gentleman, correct me if I'm wrong, I think our discussion centered around, um, the fact that it, that it was feasible to, to put the two projects out together as, as one singular project. Uh, some of the committee members feel that the, the project, if bid as such, ought to have a, a sort of A and a B part to it, so that a contractor could bid one item and the other item, or both, or whichever. Um, that's, that's a possibility for sure. I think, um, there's some issues that I had personally about the, the project bid documents, and I guess I'll just kind of vet those here. As you know, we have two designers, we have two OPMs, we have two buildings, um, and to put out a bid set, as you know, we have, we have two important parts to the bid set, the drawings and the specifications. So the drawings, we all recognize. Uh, the specifications essentially define the performance requirements and, and level of quality for the project. And generally, those are, you know, 300 to 500 pages for, for one of these projects. So as you can imagine, if we were to bid this, this set, we would have two of those right now, because we have, we have two designers, we have two projects. The economy of the work, uh, for one contractor to do the project would be such that the, the items within those specifications were more or less the same, right? So that he could procure materials from one source, he could, he could follow one standard of care for the, for the project as a whole. Um, all of those items would have to be kind of reconciled, if you will. Um, so, I don't know if either the senior center committee or the library committee has discussed how we might reconcile the package into one, but, but I think there would be a risk if we just simply had two document sets, which covered everything from site work to electrical, you know, mechanical systems, and we got something that was sort of, uh, apples and oranges. I, I think we'd lose some of the economy of the, the project if we didn't do that. And that might mean that the, the designers would have to go and tweak some of the work that they've already done, and there's a risk there, of course, for additional design, which might cause us to lose some of the advantage of bidding the project together. So I'll kind of open that up for the two committees to see if there's a response.
I was gonna say, yeah, there might just be some confusion, because in our last discussion at the senior center building committee, um, you know, we're looking at the bid documents being ready in, forgive me if I'm wrong here, Phil, but it's late January, early February. I don't know if the library's gonna be ready at that time to bid the project. I don't think so based on their schedule, and I'm not as familiar with it. So, um, we had talked about bidding the senior center first, but including, kind of prioritizing that follow-up, uh, library bidding, uh, you know, having criteria in the bid process where perhaps that contractor would bid on the project again. And Phil might be able to speak to this better than I can, but, um, that it, what you guys are, what you're saying is different than what we had kind of.
Okay.
Thought and were thinking along the lines of.
Okay.
So, a couple of things. So, um, the idea of combining the two projects, I just got word that on Friday. So, um, on November 14th, at that select board meeting, I was tasked to communicate with Mark Sullivan and go over bidding timing scenarios, construction logistics, all that. So I brought that tonight, but I'll first talk about the topic of combining these two projects. So, my first concern is, you know, the library project is connected to a state grant. I would be blown away if MBLC would allow that project to be combined with another project. I would bet my paycheck that they wouldn't allow that. Um, and the, the idea of combining these two at this point is extremely late in game, extremely late. Um, the effort to make them one project, uh, that's a lot, and, you know, the idea is we're gonna get going with bidding, so we can decrease the amount of escalation that's accrued on both projects. So, I think that's going the opposite direction, to be honest with you. Um, and then the other items, you know, like you said, David, you have a, one design team that's already kind of produced drawings and specs, another design team that produced drawings and specs, and those same design teams, same, same with the OPMs. We entered into a contract with Hadley, understanding a construction control procedure and scope of work for this project, and then for this project, to combine that construction control effort where me as an OPM, Mark Sullivan as an OPM, all of a sudden the monthly payouts we're reviewing every month went from, you know, a five and a half, a $5 million monthly payout, to whatever that number goes to. Um, that's a different scope of work. And then the other concern I would have is, um, I, I don't know if combining these two projects keeps these projects on budget. You know, if you take senior center budget, which the tax base approved, library budget, I, I don't know if that equates to a, a number that pays them on budget, over budget, under budget. I mean, we'd have to go through an estimate process to confirm that. I like to think you reduced the amount of markups, maybe they're under budget back, I don't know. You'd have to go through the estimate process to confirm that. There's just a lot to do to make that happen.
I think there's maybe a little bit of miscommunication, but I think at least my thoughts was that we would pursue the two projects at the same time, not combine them.
Although we could certainly save money if we had done that, we'd kind of pass that at this point. So, um, I, I think the bigger issue was starting construction either at the same time or as close as possible. You know, they may have to be started back a couple of months, but, and saving money with the cost escalations and the borrowing and things like that versus the actual materials.
But they also said that you probably wouldn't know who would, you would get on some of these bid processes if you did the projects both at the same time, so that it would be... these bid processes if you did the projects both at the same time, so that it would be probably wiser to start with the senior center and have those bid documents go out to certain people, and then followed up after the library had gotten their finalization from the planning board on their project, and then go ahead and start that, so that you're already a few months ahead with the senior center, and then you would go into the library and then have the bidding go out onto their projects.
So I agree, but I also think we have talked about going back and talking to Mark about that idea, and really vetting that idea a little bit more. Phil, fill that with-
Yeah.
So I wonder if you would talk to us a little bit about that?
Yeah.
Because there might be economies of bidding at the same time, too. We weren't sure, and that was the investigation that was gonna happen after the meeting.
I just wanted to hear. So it's five here.
Thank you.
There should be another thing. I got like another skid full of coffee, so I think you guys want to join us.
One of our thoughts was, we're not, we're not trying to combine them, but what we wanted to do was have some review of the specs. So we'd be doing, doing the restrooms, don't have one type of toilet in one and another model in, in the other. Just try to make sure that there is some type of uniformity between some of the products. That's what we're asking.
Yeah.
And, and that, that's what-
That's the communication.
Yeah, that's a coordination effort, that's easy. I think the one thing I would add to that is, you know, this is-
We could have the same toilets all the way around. I mean, that's the least of our problems.
Yeah.
But the point being is to have both projects ready at roughly the same time, so that a contractor could bid both at the same time if they chose to, or you can get two separate ones depending, but-
I think it'd be really helpful.
Yeah, so can I get into that?
It looks like the two OPMs have done, so maybe they could just-
Yeah, and again, apologies for misunderstanding the, the task here. Sounds like my committee had some discussions that were a little bit different from what I anticipated, not having been affected.
That's okay, there's no-
So Mark Sullivan and I have been communicating with the past couple of weeks on these two topics of bidding timing and construction logistics. So, um, if you didn't get one of these, I'm sorry, but it's a two-sided paper that has the bullet points to those conversations. So when we started talking about bidding timing, the idea was, let's first figure out what are the realistic bidding scenarios, um, now that a good amount of time's elapsed and so on. So the thought was, the, the first thought is, you know, the initial big picture schedule strategy of constructing the senior center, moving the senior center folks to the new building, and then starting a bait and demo of the existing building. Uh, that ship is sealed. If we tried to do that, we'd be kind of too close to that, um, June two thousand twenty, MBLC grant milestone, so that's really not worth going over. And then the other thought is, you know, when you talk about the library project, that project has a couple scopes of work before they can actually start foundations. They have to abate, you know, they have to build and demo, and then they can start foundations. So it would be in half, in my opinion, and Mark's opinion, it would be in Hadley's best interest to go up to bid with that project, you know, as soon as their construction documents are ready. That way, you have as much time as you can get to, um, get the building weather tight for bad weather. So the first bidding scenario, after thinking about those thoughts, is a staggered bid, which is essentially what we're all kind of saying right now, is, so senior center project maintains its current schedule where the goal is to have our bid set ready for bid mid-January, late January, with a goal to be starting construction early March to mid-March. And the idea is that early to mid-March is the same timeframe when the library will be ready with their bid set. They advertise, they go up to bid, and, um, essentially, six to eight weeks post us breaking ground, they're breaking ground, so early May timeframe. Um, so the thoughts on that is, you know, for contractors that are going into next year with a, with financials that they can afford both projects, they're gonna attack those projects. You know, we'll, we'll get out, myself and Mark, we'll make phone calls, and we'll advertise both projects coming out, um, so, you know, look for the library set and the whole thing. And I like to think we'll get real competitive bidding that way. Um, the other thought is the obvious, less time we wait to put the library set out, less escalation we're accruing. And then the other, you know, the longer you wait to put the library set out, the closer you're getting to those MBLC milestones and the concern there. So the other bidding scenario that, you know, Mark and I wouldn't recommend, but people might talk about, is simultaneously bidding the project. So the first concern is, um, we're not on the same timeframe, design schedule-wise, so senior center project would have to go on hold for like a month and a half, two months, to have library construction documents catch up with us. So that's a month and a half to two months of escalation senior center would have to approve. The second point is, you know, if you're a contractor, you like the idea of these two projects all in one consolidated area, but the ideal situation is you can focus on one bid set, make a, a competitive bid on that bid set, and then roll into the next estimate, the next project, as opposed to combining them, then you might feel like you're crunch for time to put out two competitive bids. Uh, then the third point is, you know, the mobilization of the two projects, you know, the initial startup, that happening all at once with both projects, that's a lot, a lot of moving pieces, it's, you know, so ideally, it's, you know, the senior center setting up tent fencing, they're, they're, you know, getting rid of topsoil, they're, uh, moving in with the office trail, the whole thing, erosion control, we're doing that, we're getting our feet wet, and then the library starts and mobilizes. That, that's a better scenario than kind of all at once.
So we're talking like a two-month overlap?
Yeah, six, eight week, yep. Yep. And then, um, and so I called a couple, um, GCs that had originally prequelled the senior center project, they felt that timeframe made sense, uh, and they actually preferred that over at the same time.
Like, I mean, that would basically accelerate the, the library's completion by, what, seven months versus doing them separately, or one after another, because it's a horrible time, right?
We're looking to do them six, eight weeks.
No, I'm saying versus doing them one after another, like-
Oh, right, one after-
At least seven months.
Yeah. And Phil, based on where you're at with, with Mark, I'm sorry, this is Phil, Brian. Yeah. So in terms of the dates that are being thrown out there?
Yeah, I talked to-
Seems like that's-
Yeah, I talked to Mark and Phil about these dates, and it looks like it's gonna be a issue.
Okay. And Allison, so our committee would just roll right through them, right? We would just keep going in order to make this happen?
So we're seeing our final design and going into the estimate with Phil later tonight after we adjourn here, and then we'll be making our plans for going forward. But pretty much what is left is, is getting the construction documents, um, you know, that's mostly in Phil's hands, so we can do a lot of the things. But, yeah, so, I mean, obviously, a lot still has to happen in order for this to, you know, that has nothing to do with us, it has to do with your advice decisions now, so that's really sort of why we're here. We feel like between our teams, we have a good plan that we would like to do, so we would just really, uh, you know, need your blessing on it, because other perks obviously need to help in order for this to happen. But this is something that our committee is comfortable with, as yours and Susan spoke to this.
So I'm gonna just resurrect the, we had a little bit of conversation at the last meeting about project management. Um, and I, I think when you look at it right now, you know, originally, we had this like a linear process going on, um, subsequent to these projects, then we had the approval for North Hadley Substation. So from a town perspective, we're gonna have these two multimillion-dollar projects going on simultaneously, and then we're gonna have a third one starting in North Hadley. I, I don't feel like we've got the bandwidth to do that well without, without some additional assistance, so one of the things we talked about at the last meeting or the meeting before was, um, seeing if we could figure out how to hire a, call it a clerk of the works. I mean, we have OPMs responsible for their respective projects, but somebody to fly cover, if you will, um, in, in a role to do coordination and communication. I mean, the opportunities for missteps here are significant, um, and just a miscommunication, a misunderstanding can wind up with two projects of that nature costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars, so, um, I'm wondering if we could talk about that, I mean, it's something-
Well, we actually have three projects going, because the sub-fire station committee is ready to go for this, for this-
Yeah, that's what I said, so we'd have these two, and then that one's gonna overlay. So I feel like we, as a select board, need to have somebody who is day-to-day tasked with the communication and coordination of those projects.
We've always had a clerk of the works on any big projects. We had it on the school, and we had it on the public safety complex, we had clerk of the works for both of those projects.
We each have a clerk of the works, too. Yeah. No, so what I'm talking about is an overarching, so this, call it a board, we're the town's voice.
Project manager.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have anybody on town staff who's got the skill set or the time to do it. We certainly don't have anybody on a volunteer basis who has the skill set or the time to do it. I think we owe it to the taxpayers to hire a professional. Um, and I know that, you know, Colliers and probably D. Sullivan and some folks have people that could do that. The more I think about it, I'm not really sure it's the best to have the same organization do, but, you know, something we can talk about. But we would need to have, um, funding for it, and I guess my question is, um, could we, and I have no idea what the number is, I can throw out a number, I'm gonna call it a hundred thousand dollars, that could be outrageously low or high, I don't know, but if we can, if everybody agrees that we should do something like that, and we can find out how much it costs, can we squeeze that money out of the three existing project budgets to make it happen?
We don't have an extra penny in, in the sub-fire station.
And everybody, all three are gonna say the same thing.
No, we don't, because we-
And I'm not just saying that, that's true.
Well, we looked at it last night on ours, and we're right to the penny.
Right.
So nobody has a contingency budget left?
We do, but that needs to stay there, 'cause we're gonna get to a construction. It's, the fluff that I would love to see isn't the, uh, both firing, senior center.
So, and for the library, we've already volunteered to help pay for Swinell Space, so I think some of our money that we could use for that, we might, I mean, Allison would speak better to that, but I think we have, we're giving it to Swinell Space. We can switch that, I guess, but, um-
I mean, my concern is, again, one, one misstep, and everybody's contingency budget's gonna be blown out of the water anyway.
I thought I heard you saying at the last meeting that this person was going to do , uh, less with new construction and more with organization of moving and timing of who's going where and when.
Yeah, I, I think the idea, well, I think it would be both, because I don't think we need to explain to anybody in the room how this, how we work, and what works well and what doesn't work well. So we're gonna have, again, multimillion-dollar projects going on where, at, at any given point in time, Phil and Mark are gonna be dealing with construction issues. You know, some, something's gonna go bump in the night, and there has to be a coordination, there's gonna be a delay with charter, it's usually utilities, I mean, some, something will happen, and that will throw the whole schedule off. But there may be dependencies between the depart, the projects, and decisions are gonna have to be made, and some of those may have to ultimately come back to the town, meaning the select board. We're meeting every other week, you know, and we don't really have somebody assigned to this, so it would just seem to be a prudent thing to have a, I'll call it a coordinator to deal with these three projects. And to your point, Jane, in advance of that, we, if we agree on the schedule tonight, well, right now, I'm all in, um, if we agree on the schedule tonight, we immediately need to start putting an action plan in place, and we need somebody to cross the Ts and dot the Is and go around and interview everybody who's affected, make sure everybody's needs are being met, you know, what's a need, what's a want, all that good stuff. We're not gonna be doing it, municipal building committee isn't gonna be doing it, so it, it begs an additional resource, I think.
I wish we knew, I, I mean, it's not your fault, but I kind of wish we knew how much it was, so that we could figure out how to make it work. I, it's not your fault that we don't, but I think, but I think, I think, I have people. And one of them's raising his hand right now.
Well, I would only, I mean, so what, what you have ultimately is a program, right? Because you have three buildings. I mean, so I've, I've dealt with program managers that essentially do what you're describing. We have some very well-qualified OPMs that can manage the individual projects. I think somebody overseeing that, if you had a town engineer or someone to that effect, that would be a great solution. We do have a project consultant budget, as you recall, which has been approved and supplemented.
Oh, yeah.
And it's, it's on life support, there's not a lot of money there, but it's, it's something you could start with and potentially supplement on the next vote. I'm just saying, now, there's a thought, but-
Do you know how much is left in that kitty?
I think twenty thousand, but David is something we don't know.
I think it's twenty-five thousand, but this is the timeline, okay?
We gotta make sure that the last, yeah, then we can, there are two budgets, there's the on-call consultant, which I think has thirty thousand in, but we're using that. Yeah, we gotta, we got, there's some bills that we gotta pay, but let's say twenty, twenty-five thousand.
David, do you know how much one would cost? Any idea?
It's an advance of, of over, above that number, I'm sure.
But it's, it's a-
The number, the number you described is probably low.
A hundred, yes.
Yeah, it's low?
Yeah.
I think the, uh, the critical-
I don't think we paid that.
Periods to have oversight or a coordinator would be between the January first senior center bid period and then breaking ground on the library, because the more important, I mean, the OPMs, they can talk to each other, they can coordinate actual construction events. Um, the issue is gonna be coordinating all the various departments and moving people and renting space, and, I mean, if we're gonna use the church, we've got to talk to the diocese and get lease agreements and everything else. That's where we're gonna run into the biggest delays, when we don't have anywhere to go or anywhere to put people, and we're ready to break ground. So even if we could plan on just that four months or six months with a person like that, I think it could save a lot of money and a lot of hassle down the road, so I don't know what, how that would work as far as a six-month contract with someone or what, but, um, I mean, I'm, I'm for this schedule. I think this is a, a good way forward, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but it's, um- Should we just make a motion to approve this schedule?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll second that.
Maybe.
I made the motion.
You did?
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Hey, I mean, we're talking about we would approve it, why don't we just approve it?
We should probably bring something up.
Further discussion.
Joyce, you mentioned on it, the fire substation project, so currently, that schedule is for us to go up to bid kind of mid-late March, which is in the library. So, um, myself and Joyce and the rest of the fire station, the other committee would have to coordinate on, you know, maybe we essentially stagger library, fire station, like stagger in senior center and library, so maybe-
But there's not really any coordination as far as temporary space or issues?
No, no, I'm just more talking about the, the idea of bidding simultaneously, not doing that, that's all. And we can do that, fire station, the other committee.
We can find out what we have, and then go to our source and see if there's, and I know he has somebody in his group that probably could help us, but I don't know what the logistics, uh, if we, on hiring somebody like that, do we have to go through a whole bid process to do that? We have somebody in house that has probably that in his house that could probably help us to at least start this whole thing out, especially with this demolition.
It's not, it's not something you have to bid on. It's, um, it's if it's under a certain amount, is it?
Yeah, but I think we're above that certain amount.
Well, for the time being, we're not, though.
Well, if you do phase one, we do know.
Do phase one.
Yeah, for a phase one, you could set up like a not to exceed, I don't know if the number's fifteen K or twenty K or twenty-five K, whatever the number is, maybe you could add.
But we, you're right, the, the big critical thing is, is the getting everything prepared for the demolition and getting that coordinated properly. There's a lot of logistics there that we have to deal with.
Because in, in reality, if we're gonna be on the schedule, um-
I guess start that tomorrow.
We could start tomorrow, as far as talking to the diocese and whatnot for lease agreements, so.
So I have her motion and second on the table, and is there any other further discussion on, on this piece?
May I ask a question? Uh, Phil, I suspect you and Mark have discussed contractor lay-down areas and staging. Is there any concerns over the very limited stagger in the construction where one contractor would be on top of the other, how the lay-down areas will work, you know, you're, you're demolishing the senior center building, that's the construction access per se for the senior center? Uh, anything you can add in terms of that?
Well, so, I mean, in, in the construction logistics plan and the bid set that we previously issued, senior center set, that, you know, that showed essentially the library broken up into two phases, so we're using the north entry, phase one, south entry, phase two. Um, but, yeah, the property's tight, the library construction zone's even tighter. Um, so, yeah, we're gonna have to continue, it's gonna be ongoing, it's not gonna be something where we coordinate now prior to bid and we figure it all out now. Um, we're gonna need two GCs on board and hear what they have to say, what they feel is the best location for office trails and so on. Um, so it's gonna be a process throughout construction. But we've talked about it, and, you know, to answer your question on the concerns, yeah, we, I said it wasn't concerns, but I mean, it's, it's not concerns that are, you know, causing any issues to move forward.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the senior center itself, when it's demolished, the, you know, setback requirements for the demolition work are probably gonna take out one or both of-
The setback requirements for the demolition work are probably gonna take out one or both of the driveways and then, you know, we have an issue with construction access for the senior center. I don't know. That could be addressed somehow. It's something the contractors will just have to deal with.
Right.
It'll affect the bid price as well.
Yep.
Oh, demolish it as quickly as possible and get it cleaned up.
Well, that's a critical point. Get the right contractors to do the demolition because there are some that can take three days while others take weeks to do it. So, you wanna get the big one.
Is the demolition contract going to be the same contract as the construction contract?
It's the library issue.
Well, I'm looking at you, but I'm really.
It's in the library, is that what you asked?
Yep.
It's in the library.
Yep.
I was only offering that maybe you could demolish the senior center first, get it out of the way and then start the senior center construction.
Can we do that separately?
If we can get everybody out of there quickly enough.
Yeah, then you would have to, I mean, that's the relocation efforts, right?
Yeah, I mean, the relocation effort really is the number one task here. And that's a different task coordination than coordinating construction activities once the buildings get going. And so, I don't think you need a professional engineer, I mean, you guys have, I don't think you need one to do the coordination, arranging for space and making sure everybody has a home and keeping people's feet through the fire on that. I mean, it sounds like a planning thing.
I think you're right, but it's just, it's gonna take someone basically full-time working on it.
Yeah, I think what we're saying though is maybe you need like a planner for that part and not the engineer.
Maybe you were cheaper.
For later, like a lower paid guy.
Yeah, I think when town engineer was thrown, I was just, in other larger municipal governments, they have that position in-house, so we wouldn't even be having the conversation. Because that's what they would do.
Okay, sorry.
But you're right, it's just a project manager.
Right.
Well, one thing we had talked about, and we can do it seriously or not, but we voted on Gary taking it over because he's familiar with the buildings. He is a town employer.
Homeless.
But he would be able to help with the coordination if that were acceptable.
I can see Gary being a critical resource, but I, I mean, he's, again, we don't wanna take people out of their regular jobs because then we're just creating a, I don't know, we're creating another gap and an issue for all the things that Gary wants not doing while he's doing this.
But he does know the buildings the best. He knows.
Oh, yeah, he'll be instrumental in, as a resource.
So, he needs some involvement somehow.
Absolutely.
Yeah, he can certainly direct as much time and resource. After it's told this, it's also, yeah.
So, are you suggesting another possibility is hiring a backup for Gary to take care of the things he would be doing? Is that what you're saying?
No.
No process, no.
No, that's not in the budget there either.
Part of his job is maintenance, so I would kind of funnel some of that in that direction.
He's coordinated some of the stuff that we started already, trying to get some bids together for, if we go the source of doing some modifications. So, we got all those prices together, we got some coordination together with regard to that. He's brought up some valuable points with regard to the senior center and to timing on that. So, he is a valuable source and we need to use him on that. So, some of the work's been done. I mean, and like David just said, we gotta start this tomorrow, we're gonna meet these deadlines, so.
We gotta vote first.
All right. All right, so, motion on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we gotta.
Okay, now, now we're doing it.
Get the deed going.
Do we have any updates on the diocese and that?
Yeah, so, we got in touch with the diocese. They worked through the Colebrook Realty Services. So, Colebrook has been in touch with me. They have a process which involves the local parish council before it goes to the bishop in Springfield. So, they're putting together some ideas and they have to observe their own local process, but we've had that conversation.
You know, we've spoken with Colebrook or?
Yeah, Colebrook, Ed Shippey is the person I've talked to.
Did they give a hint at a timeline as far as?
They have, they gave me some homework, which Suzanne was able to help me out with and I have to get that information back to them about a timeline.
But you don't wanna hear that the actually, the diocese is gonna take four months inside.
Well, we need to, we'll do the best we can, what we have to work with.
So, can we talk a little bit about space while we have the committee here?
Yeah, that's why they're here.
So, as far as Hadley Media, I think in the planning board, those were the two biggest issues as far as finding space to go. So, is there, the library, is there usable space for Hadley Media in the library that they could, they could move into?
Yeah, we've already talked with Hadley Media about, I mean, I don't know specifically. They haven't told me, you know, they need X number of square feet.
I actually met with them today because I'm their liaison.
Yeah, okay.
So, they need a desk and a, they need the server, they don't need a whole lot of desks.
Right, but they're, they're welcome to use our space upstairs if it works for them. We'd be happy to have them.
So, at this point, they're basically covered?
They're covered as long as the libraries give them a thumbs up. So, I mean, the issue with Hadley Media is that wherever they go, they know that they're gonna be there for a while, obviously. So, a while. And so, they, we're gonna need to have the drop moved. And so, it's a matter of scheduling that with charter. And the concern is always, again, when you're dealing with the utility companies, actually, you were sharing that with us at the last meeting, that we hear horror stories about delays. So, that's something that we would need to get on right away.
So, the other thing is, we haven't voted as trustees, but I'm willing to tell you there's four of us here, so it just becomes a matter of an official.
And David, I don't see anyone upset.
So, yeah, I don't think that we have an issue of that at all.
They have a budget to move.
Okay.
If I may, the, the building as good a shape as it's in lacks power, okay? There's a severe restriction on the amount of power that can be tapped into the existing panel. So, I'm not sure where we're at with that, Tim, but I think we would wanna speak to the media folks to make sure we can obtain enough circuits for that.
And you're gonna have temp power at the construction site, right? So, maybe it could just, I don't know, look something.
Well, the problem, the problem within the building is, if I may, we started this whole project with the library and the ceiling and that's been ongoing for years and it's been problematic. We know that there was knob and two wiring. So, we were trying to phase the lighting issue in the Goodwin and the problem is it just creates other code issues. The circuit breaker boxes are none, we'll just say, they lack code.
They're old.
But, you know, they're, they're safe as they are, but we don't wanna play around with them. I think that there's enough power that goes upstairs to the second floor for media, based on some discussions I just had. I think that's fine. What we're looking for, the big problems certainly was TB5 and the planning board. Planning board brought up their issue with storage. I think what, we came out of our meeting was, we can go to the state, get some waivers on using the second floor for, because of the accessibility issue. Because what we'd like to use that for is temporary storage space. We can, we can, it's structurally sound, it can take load. The problem that we're faced with and then why we haven't used that second floor is that the ceiling is, is being decoupled from the structure. And any type of vibration brings sections down. It's not well intact, so.
To the bottom line, can we get, where are we putting the planning board?
We're going to put the planning board in this building.
This building?
But their problem was, was storage. We're gonna put storage over there. We're just gonna have to bite the bullet and say, guys, and everybody else that needs storage, it's gonna be that second floor.
And, I mean, as a plan B, we could also use.
They can use some of it.
Wait, are you saying the second floor of the Goodwin for the planning board documents too?
Some of it, yes.
Do they require?
We actually use that space. It's not, it's not just a locked attic.
How much do they need?
What do we use that room right here for?
Credit, we're not using it.
Could, if it doesn't work for the library, could all of their storage go to the?
Stuff in here?
No, we don't have any type of good climate control over there.
How about over here?
And anything that we keep on storing over there is going to be compromised over time.
Tim, hadn't we initially planned for over here for storage, the next room?
For the planning?
That's where their room is. They don't think that there's enough room for all of their files.
Part of their problem was they said they needed immediate access. So, if they're having meetings, say, at Hopkins before a meeting, they needed to access the files from there, but, I mean, that's.
Why can't they have their meetings here on Tuesday night?
I think they just come back here.
Just come back here, as they usually did, and that room have their files in it. I mean, let's not get crazy here. Simple.
Well, that was, that was the discussion.
Well, all right, well, let's make a decision.
I'm in favor of that.
All right, planning board comes back, all their stuff goes over there.
Hadley Media goes to the library. Again, this has to be fully vetted and the seniors go to.
Everything and then it's accessible to everybody.
And then Jenny, our parking wreck, we don't wanna forget about Jenny.
We talked, so, we have that floor plan. She's, there was only two departments that came to, to talk about some of their issues and she was one of them. She brought up a good point. She just wanted to flip-flop from another, from across the hall on the first floor. Chalked with Board of Health, they had no problem with that. So, we have Jenny in the front room where Concom is right now.
Oh, okay.
So, she was fine with that size, with those modifications to the room. Board of Health was okay going to the other portion of the assessors. So, I think we have a good game plan for this building. You know, we have some dollars that we have to spend to do that work and I think we need to look at some better furniture to get rid of some of the desks and get some better furniture for people to work around.
Let's go shopping if you miss.
More workstations.
Workstations is like, they're really large houses.
So, just to interrupt you, Tim, would that be something that this alternate person we're talking about would do and would help with? Or do you guys have enough capacity to be able to handle that between yourselves, Gary?
I think.
To handle those renovations and that furniture and everything? It sounds like this is calling for a need for somebody to get it.
Bring somebody on board that we're talking about. It would be instrumental in making sure that everything is done properly and coordinated at the proper time, yes. That would help. But Gary's instrumental in trying to make sure that day-to-day.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, he's done a lot of work in two days.
So, one other possibility is that there might be surplus space available at the parish hall, so.
Yeah, that's the backup plan, right?
But for right now, the planning board will come here. TB5 will go upstairs on the second floor.
But just if there's any, you know, pulling of hair and gnashing of teeth, there is a plan B and the plan B would that if everything goes according to Hoyle over there, they have classroom space that could accommodate storage or individuals, but we would have to pay for it. I mean, so, again, whatever we negotiate with the diocese for rent, that would have to be factored in.
So, can I ask the senior center, when you move, if you move to the church, obviously, you're not gonna bring every piece of furniture.
Right, right.
So, do you have money or will you be able to store some of that furniture, say, in storage containers? Or where, what, what do you think you would?
Right now, we're working on what do we keep? What do we need to bring over? I think we talked a little bit about that. Majority of what we need to bring are, are files to continue doing the human service piece along with our computers, have the Wi-Fi and phone listings configured over there. Storage, we haven't figured out a ton. I know that our fitness equipment will be one issue. We have a treadmill, a recombinant bike and stuff that'll be going into the new building. There's only, I wanna say, three machines plus a weight rack. Weight rack might even be able to come over. But as I'm hearing you talk about, there's more classrooms and da-da-da-da-da, I'll just say that when I went over there, they had three classrooms, well, three and a half. So, one classroom is already taken by the Knights of Columbus. Another classroom would be either two of our staff or all three of us in one room. And then we were, and then they have a small room that we'd like to, you know, maybe have alternate, like some of our small programming things in so that they're not sitting in the same space we're using for office space when we're having confidential conversations with people. So, that, that really leaves one classroom that might be the storage for whatever we have, for file cabinets, da-da-da-da-da. And then like a half a classroom down the other end of the hall that's unrelated that we don't need. And then we'd be doing the exercise and using the kitchen, all in the big parish center part. So, I'm not sure how much else.
Well, my, my thoughts were that the mobile storage, kind of shipping containers, things like that, that can be secured.
The iBox and pods.
Yeah, like pods, something similar to that. As long as it's not sensitive to climate control, if you got treadmills or extra furniture, things like that, I mean, we can pack those up and store them at the DPW or wherever, that's on time.
But that could be called Russell's.
Or, yeah, or at Russell or wherever. And it'll be a heck of a lot cheaper than paying for rental space inside of a building. So, I think it's, the less stuff you have to bring, the better.
Yeah, we don't have to bring a ton of stuff over there. I mean, most of what we do is mobile. There are programs we run out of, you know, our, exercise is the biggest thing and that's people-oriented with a facilitator. We have some hand weights and stuff like that, but that's all easy to move over to one bin plus a weight rack. It's not a big deal. That doesn't need to go into storage, but the, like I said, the exercise equipment would need to go in and then we'd need to bring a couple files, locked file cabinets. The town nurse is a whole other different story because she has a lot of confidential and sharped containers and things like that that have to be constantly under lock and key. I don't know if that's available there in addition to what we'll already need and she would need a confidential space which might take that other half a classroom, not the one way down, but the programming. So, I'm not sure how much else you can squeeze in over there if we're gonna keep doing everything we're doing.
I'd just like to squeeze in as little as possible. I know it's gonna be, it's gonna be tight down there, it's gonna be tight over there, it's gonna be visible.
I don't picture bringing a lot over there. We don't function that way.
So, we're gonna try and just do what we can until the new building is built. You know, we're all just gonna work towards just making whatever we need to do to make it okay until it's up and running.
Yep.
So, you know, we can all, we can all just bide our time and just, you know, go, go with it, you know, and do the best we can.
Absolutely.
It's about the bottom line for all of us.
The other departments said that we have to coordinate some of their stuff. DPW, we're gonna have to, they, they have stuff. That's the, they don't get to, they don't need to look at that stuff. I thought process was put that on the second floor, good one for the time being.
Yeah, the water sewer.
Yes, the largest.
That's up on the third floor of the senior center.
And there's other, and there's other.
The historical commission, has anybody talked with them?
That'll be part of the degree process.
Yeah, the ongoing, yeah.
I mean, our, our biggest concern was seniors, planning board.
We could be pretty mobile.
And parking wreck, you know, just to get those settled, that we're going to have them because they have meetings, you have your activities. So, those were the big things and all the papers and files and things like that, we'll figure out where they can go. But the people are, you know, are what we really needed to settle on tonight.
Yeah, I don't see that being an issue with that space for us.
Okay, so that's, we don't need a motion on that at all, you wanna?
Yeah, we can make a motion that will put, bring the planning board back to the town hall to use this room for the meetings, the front office there for storage and then the parking wreck will be here. I'm sorry. Hadley Media to the library and senior center negotiate with the diocese for church space.
Okay, second.
Any further discussion on that?
Maybe it's not your fancy or.
All those in favor?
Well, no, that's after.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Maureen, what did you have to say?
So, maybe long-term, you might think of scanning, getting into scanning documents.
Did you miss that conversation we had? We had, we had a conversation during our tri-ward meeting.
Okay.
So, we have already anticipated doing some laser.
Who's going paperless?
Yes, well, that's exactly what we're talking about.
It's not gonna happen before.
No, I understand that, long-term.
Yeah, long-term.
We don't wanna be paying for brick and mortar to store things that are digitized.
And do you ever use this space as a swing space or is this always set up?
Want to do some swing dancing in here? Swing space for.
No, I mean, in terms of like another department using this space during the day.
We need meetings space. Yeah, it's the only, the only place we have. And it's where the TV five, or Hadley Media drops here and everything.
But during the daytime, people do use this.
For meetings and stuff, yeah.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if it was like.
That's where the department head meetings are.
It's always used.
People come up here just to get away from their offices, don't they?
You know, just put things on casters and moving around and.
During budget season, where you're going to find it.
Geez. Okay, so we got that settled.
How about the, I mean, we can talk about it again, but hiring a person or having some kind of coordinator, program coordinator, program manager.
I think we're looking into that when we find out how much money we have.
Okay, we're going to wait on that till we vote on that next.
Yeah, we'll find out.
I'll walk with David on that. We'll see exactly how much we can pull out of wherever.
Yeah, but I'd like to make sure we talk about the skill sets too, to have a conversation about that.
Should we do that again next week?
Is there a job description for the person you have now available for a building committee?
Couldn't it be two different people?
Well, he's a town, he's a town employee that they're talking about, which.
I thought there was a fund for hiring a part-time consultant.
There is, that's what.
He's a job description.
Yeah, so we need to get a job description together.
We could work on developing that with the OPMs.
That'd be great.
Yes, is there any way to build something like that together for next week so that we could move forward? Because we're getting tight on time, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be great. And then the other thing that we needed to talk about is the, after all is said and done with the Goodwood Memorial Library, the planning board has put restrictions on us for the use of that building and parking. Of course, we can't use the parking, believe it or not, anywhere else. So I guess somewhere down the road, I'm not sure what we're going to do with that build. Another building we have to think about.
Yeah, we've had discussions and honestly not come up with a scenario that works perfectly for that building with limited parking. As you know, I proposed a ancillary parking lot over here at Russell's School. And to our knowledge, I don't think Marlowe's had moved that forward much other than getting maybe one bid on something. We had not engaged a designer yet to do that work.
Yeah, put in for a grant, I believe, for it, but I don't think anyone can get up it.
But there'd be time for that because of the time.
Yeah. The part that is connected to that, of course, is Russell's School. And I'll, you know, when we have more time to discuss that, I'll engage you guys on our findings. Suffice it to say that the cost of fixing the building has gone up substantially since the DRA report. So the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost the town if we want to maintain or keep that building for town use. And then if we were to build a parking lot, then we'd have to, as David said at another meeting, we'd have to consider whether we were cutting off a portion of private property owners' parking if that were to become privatized. All considerations and honestly, that's going to be a longer conversation with you all.
There you go. Package deal, North Hadley Hall, Russell's School.
Sounds familiar, doesn't it?
Want to knock it down? And want to throw in the good one for that one too, so we don't have another building to take care? Actually, that's what they did up at Salisbury. They actually demolished the old library and put a new library in its place.
Yeah.
So that they didn't have to think about doing another building.
Right. It's also the town center.
Yeah, well, it's a town center. So isn't it there?
We're looking at about $1,600 a square foot for that building to be renovated, so.
Oh, for Russell's School.
Yeah, so you can imagine the buildings that we're building new, that square footage costs quite a bit less as we know. So what's the value to the town? And I guess that'll be the question if we decide to pursue a non-voting vote either spring or fall to see what the towns' thoughts are on that. Of course, we did that in North Hadley and we still own the North Hadley Village Hall. So we're a little reluctant as a committee to advance that non-voting vote and then sort of maybe sit on it intentionally for a while.
Another five years.
We'd sure love to see something happen with North Hadley.
Well, we have.
You're out the bid.
We're out the bid. We're waiting. We're going to come in next week.
For the realtor or for actual bids for the project?
Realtor.
Realtor. And then maybe we'll get some bits.
We'd hope, we'd like to think so. Now we got at least a piece of property that would go with it.
David, do you want to mention that real quick for the camera that anybody that might be watching as far as?
Yeah, so we have a bid out for anybody who would like to help out the town for sale of North Hadley Village Hall. So we're looking for realtor, commercial real estate broker. Anybody who is in real estate is eligible to bid on this project.
Commercial or residential, is that what you're thinking?
Commercial, residential and talk to Jennifer because she's managing that bid.
I guess we want to bid on.
Well, we just have to approve the EDM's contract to redo the construction documentation for the senior center.
Was there an update on that?
Yeah, there's an update on that. So we got a revised one. So if that could get pushed to next week's.
Okay.
So like one meeting, that'd be ideal.
Okay. Anything else from the municipal that you can think of?
I'm aware. We're always available if you'd like to. I was joined you again.
So next week, you're going to, you'll have a formal document.
Description for clerk-in-law slash program manager role.
And possibly how much?
Two hundred dollars.
Yes.
Okay, that'd be great. All right, so we'll put that on the agenda for next week.
Already done.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Hope for future meetings.
Is that everything?
Everything?
Do you want to give any statement here for the library or senior center?
Okay. Hi. Oh, we, oh. David. David Ture. David Ture. We did vote yesterday in the sub-fire station committee not to sell the property. I think we wanted to get the intake on municipal building committee. Tim?
I could summarize if you say it again.
The, the plea, sub-fire station committee voted last night not to sell any part of the property up in North Hadley. Correct. They said not to sell it. They have asked again.
Oh, you mean the portion of the.
The one on either side.
Yeah.
Yep, the butters.
Who's going to get back to you?
Well, I just wanted to clarify that with the municipal.
You know, our role has been that we lack public or town-owned space for the future. And as much as we like to preserve that open space, I mean, who knows in a hundred years, it'll have even less space. So it seems to make sense. I hope that we could maybe get some park space, open space, recreational space out of that parcel at some point.
Until the time that we may need it for something else.
Yeah.
Okay. So I just wanted to, that we would get back to them, that we would not be selling that property.
If I could make one more comment as part of the municipal building committee. We, we're trying to work with all the, all these committees to be helpful in establishing standard of care and quality for the projects. Making sure that the construction and, you know, all the drawings and specs are up to the quality that we hope for town buildings. We know that in the past, some buildings haven't been built as well as we'd like. And we have all, I think, the safeguards necessary to ensure that doesn't happen again. That said, I'd like to just advocate that our committee gets copied on some of the progress drawings and specifications so that we really can look them over and speak to them and probably even have some of the OPM and other persons, you know, at our meetings to just talk through that, how the cooperation is so far. Well, we have representation on all the committees and they come back and I think sometimes they feel like they've been beaten up when they went to the other meetings and then they come back and they tell us what they were told. But I think it could be more cooperative if we were to have some of those persons attend our meetings and, you know, go through that one.
You mean from the individual?
From the individual building committees and also just getting copies of progress sets. I mean, we're running kind of fast and loose with deliverables, right? Sixty, ninety percent, a hundred percent. We're going to bid in January. So, you know, we just, we just would like, like a set of drawings and specs to look over.
We have sub-fire station committee, just, we just went over the ones that we had last night at ours. So we got the big set and then there's a half-set size. So certainly I think they're available with Mike if you want to take the half-set size and take it to your meeting.
We're not looking to put the brakes on anything. We just, we just want to engage and be helpful to these committees.
Oh, please feel free to see Mike about those. He has them. I don't know if he had to file them someplace else today. I think, but I think Mike does have them. I'll get to Mike so that he gets them to, half-set to Tim. Or Tim, you want to touch base with Mike?
That is a role that, you know, again, you're coming back to as a program manager. I mean, that's, again, everybody has their mission, their charge and go full steam ahead. And that's how in the past, we've gotten ourselves into trouble with some corners that got cut or decisions that got made at the last minute for monetary reasons. So I agree with you, but that's, it would be good to have somebody who has everybody's interests in mind here to make sure that, you know, there's a checklist. Did this get done by the municipal building committee? I understand from the individual committee's perspectives, they don't want to be hung up because they're waiting for you guys to meet to review something. That's an added, added layer, you know.
If that had ever happened, I might agree that would be a risk, but.
Sure, but it hasn't, yeah, yeah.
We commit on demand.
We've not been asked to look at anything as a committee. And I think the role of the committee maybe is perceived differently by each of these, these building committees. You know, we do have a representative there, but few of them have, since we've started the building process, really come to us and talked through some of the logistics like we, like we talked about tonight. So I think, all I'm asking is that you all advocate for that process and communication to work. And we're here to help. We really don't want to break the process or slow things down. We just want to be helpful.
I think you always add to it. So I think, you know, it's a good thing you all have expertise on your committee that certainly adds to, on some of these other committees that they should be having, so.
I think it was great to have you all in the same room tonight.
Yeah, it's the first time for a very long time.
Yeah, it is. So that was good. Thank you.
But it is an unbalanced, there are unbalanced committees with regard to respect of construction design. And, you know, his expertise with regard to the whole program, how it can be handled. You know, they work on how, get it done, get it done, but you know, there's a point that you want just to go to to make sure that everybody's on the same page logistically with a set of drawings. And then you go to the next phase of more detail and then final detail. You don't do a ninety percent right up front, which unfortunately happens. And it's a shame, it's a shame that that happened. But luckily, a good portion of those drawings still can be utilized, all the details and everything else. And that's, that's valuable. But, yeah, it was, we jumped too far.
So we have on the sub-fire station committee, we're submitting site plan approval submission to planning board on January 15. And then they have a site plan approval planning board hearing on February 19. Do you want this, did you get one of these? No.
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 Do you guys have a representative on the fire substation?
Gary.
Gary, oh, he's on that one.
Yeah, Gary's on it.
Gary's on that.
He's on the senior center.
Yeah, we're on budget right now, so.
Dan is as well. Both are, yeah.
Favorite walls, but rather than.
It's a plus, but if you would like to take that, you can.
I took too much of your time. I appreciate it.
No, thank you.
Yeah, always happy to have you.
And we'll, you know, as a senior center, I'll try to do my best to get stuff to you and mention it to Phil and try to make sure we get stuff to you guys.
Yeah, and Dave's usually, he's at most of our libraries.
Yeah, Dave does my field summary as well. Still haven't seen any drawings from there, but the updates are there, so, yeah.
Yeah.
I've asked Allison for the exterior renderings. I know that there's been a few comments made to us by the public about the two buildings and how they, they're not similar very much. And, you know, they lack the identity of a town building because of the differences between them.
I think the library's going to blend in nicely.
To the context, yes.
Yeah.
And I think you were right to bring up the part about the demolition of the, of the senior center and how it's going to affect the two projects and access to that property. Where if they think they're going to be going through the Legion property, again, as they have in the past, I think that's, you know, not a good thing for them to be.
It's a red flag.
It's a red flag that already just got thrown up in the air, do you know what I mean? So, you know, they've been very generous. We got them all settled over there. So I think we all, just, everybody just wants to work well together, you know.
Yeah, but I'm surprised that they wouldn't want, well, there wasn't any more discussion on separating that demo out of the entire bid and get that separated and go. Because that's pretty.
We had talked about that months ago, saying, you know, I think we had mentioned knock it down before, before winter, this winter and be done with that. We're not heating and cooling, but we couldn't find the space. But I mean, I don't see why it couldn't be broken out.
Yeah, and I think the only complication now is the fact that it's so far through the library grant process. I don't know. That would be problematic to pull it out.
Well.
And maybe not, I don't know.
How, I mean, it's just, just don't pull it out of the whole thing, but pull it out as far as going up the bid. Why can't you do that separately?
I'm just saying, I don't.
That's my question. Because that's, I mean, that's a specialized contractor that does that. There's only three around.
Yeah, that was a question, I think, you know, from Mark Sol.
The meeting at this over there, Matt, you could run over there. Run over the library.
I think David probably just wants to run home and have supper tonight.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
All right, so we have.
Lots of renovations, yes.
We have, we have the parking wreck commission here.
Oh, he's here for Zaterka Park.
Zaterka Park.
Yeah.
I was staying all night, so.
Are you staying all night?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
And take, take seats.
All right, let's do parking wreck because Steve, that won't take very long. Come on.
No, I think mine will be pretty simple.
Okay.
I'm a junior commissioner.
But thanks for staying.
Junior, the most junior commissioner from parking wreck and I'm the messenger tonight. I am giving a little update that which you all acknowledge. We ran into problems during phase three at Zaterka Park. And we concur, you know, it was a result of the actions of town officials from years ago. And we were surprised and made note, the stumps were detected and had to be cleaned up before we could proceed with the park. This was tested for early on, but apparently not found in this particular section that they kind of stumbled into when they were digging. And we now need to use the remainder of the Woodchuck Fund money to pay incremental costs. Okay, so therefore, we're coming to you, we're, we'll be looking for the town for some assistance in the spring for paving at the Zaterka site. So we're going to need some monies and we had a breakdown. David's been really good coming.
So the balance remaining in the Woodchuck Fund after the first three change orders is fifteen thousand, three seventy-nine and twenty-five cents. They're going to need that balance in order to handle change order number four as well as an invoice from the Berkshire Design Group. There's some additional funding that will come from other sources to achieve that. But Woodchuck Fund is here for that purpose. It's co-administered between the Park and Rec Commission and the Select Board. You've all taken your vote last week to approve the fifteen thousand and change. So I think your request to the board is to support that approval.
Can I ask, is your favorite? Can you explain how the project management is working on this state?
No. Let me state that I came on board when, just about at the time when they were. Let me state that I came on board when, just about at the time when they were projecting how they were going to grade. And it was midstream, you know? So, I was a friend of that at that time and all for it. And in charge of recruiting and getting people going and raising money, fundraising, like I did with Friends, Park and Rec. So, I have the least amount of knowledge of it, you know, and I know where we stand. And I go over the change orders and I was privy to that. I'm happy with what's gone on and the way it looks, week to week.
But listen, so we have OMASTA contracted to do the bulk of the work, right?
Yes.
So, who's the point person of OMASTA? I mean, the folks from OMASTA, are they going to your chair? Are they, do they come and meet with you periodically? I mean, how?
No, Andy's basically the contact person in that. And it goes between OMASTA and the company, the construction.
So.
Berkshire Design?
Berkshire. So, Park and Rec Commission own, has control of the project. As we got further into the project, we had a series of onsite meetings. I was able to help them out and provide guidance from time to time. And come up with a strategy for buttoning up the project this year. So, you know, it's, the sins of the fathers are being visited upon the sons. We have a volunteer board managing a project and with assistance from Towns Tech.
Because when this started out, there was a whole community of David L. Bean.
Yep, who has since moved on.
These folks, yeah.
But I met him once, I had one meeting up there with Berkshire and Greg and Andy. And that's all I've been really involved with, you know? At that phase of what we ran into and opened up, unearthed all the stumps.
Yeah.
And then we got those charges, so.
I'll make a motion to approve this. I'm just worried about going forward. You know, the original scope of the project, we're going to plug this up now, but where's this project going from this point forward?
Because we're going to end up getting, what, fifty thousand over or something like that by the time we finish the paving. Thirty thousand. If you said as far as the project management, talking to the representative from OMASTA, they were very frustrated by the fact that they couldn't get an answer on how to proceed for quite some time. And that kind of contributed to delays. So, that was one of their concerns as a contractor. I don't think there, it was clear who they were going to to say, make a decision what we have to do here.
Yeah, I believe that's a situation of going into the, asking the Park and Rec and how we're going to handle it. And we weren't in the position to move on it, you know? And, yeah, that would be Andy Klopaki, he's.
I think Andy probably, he doesn't have the authority, because he doesn't constitute a quorum, right? So, he needs to wait until he can confer with you and Diane.
Right, and we met right away, as soon as they, we met right away and did everything we could do in our control, you know?
Yeah, I think we've learned some lessons here. I mean, you have the legal responsibility for the parks, but we need some project management, you know, and a clear plan moving forward. And CPA is certain, knows that you're probably going to come back to them in the fall to spring, sorry, to ask for additional funding or whatever we can do to finish the project up next summer.
Second motion. It wasn't already in.
It wasn't seconded, so, any further discussion?
Is there any other work besides the paving as far as the fields and that kind of thing goes, seating and all that?
Seating and that, yeah.
Other grading, or that's all taken care of at this point?
That grading's pretty close, yeah. And they've done out, they've got the handrails and guyrails and this and that going in. It's visually appeasing right now, from where it was.
Okay, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Stay tuned for another update, Steve.
Bye, Mr. Higgins.
All right, so license renewals. Are you stamping?
I'm stamping all the licenses. Oh, yeah, I'll stamp them. There's like a hundred and sixty of them, so I'll stamp. So, licenses were all due on November thirtieth. The list you have in front of you is complete for everybody who has submitted minus one thing, which will be added on the twelfth. I do have eighteen outstanding right now who have not turned in the paperwork or communicated with me about why they haven't. But as a matter of fact, this list is full, complete, everybody's in good standing with the town, and their paperwork is complete. I would ask that you make Whole Foods and the Taproom contend upon passing their inspection from the building inspector. He's not been able to coordinate with them to get over there to do the inspections.
I'll make a motion to approve with any outstanding inspections being completed.
We're confident there won't be a problem. They've been, they've always been pretty good, but it's just time.
How about the quarters?
Quarters is painting full, everything is complete, and they've passed their inspection.
All their inspections passed, okay.
Also, the Legion Young Men's Club, they're all?
They're all done. The only two that have not been done is the Whole Foods and Taproom. Certainly, everybody has their homework to do. Some a little bit longer than others. We're confident that everybody will do what they need to do. Certainly with the Legion, we do have issues over there, and Mike is talking to them, trying to come up with another timeframe on when they're going to complete the work that they need to do. It is what it is.
Young Men's Club as well?
Yeah, they're actually in better shape. The problem with the Young Men's Club is co-issue with Fire and the state. The state's requiring something that we generally have never requested in the past, and that's sprinklers outside on the pavilion for the, at the kitchen area. That's something we're in discussions with. We don't know why that would be a requirement when it's an open platform. If anything did happen, people have, don't have just one access to go through, they'd just leave. So, you know, those.
It's an open place.
Yeah, but the state is stating that anytime you have cooking facilities.
See, you wonder why I say give those.
A thirty-five thousand dollar cancel system. And we're saying, do we really need that for a temporary type of use? So.
I just want to make sure we're holding everybody to the same standard. There's no differential treatment.
There isn't. Certainly with the Legion, we're putting them on time.
Okay, motion to approve subject to preliminary inspections.
Okay. Second. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I think we're going to have another round of licenses for next week. But if any licenses come in after, or do not come in after January first, we're asking for a twenty-five dollar late fee.
Yeah.
Should we bump that higher?
Yeah, I was going to say. Call it a slot fee.
I don't know.
So, this will be my third round of licenses. And every year, there's perpetual offenders who tell me that it's a tough time of year. And I feel like this is one of the situations you just said, we're treating everybody the same.
Yeah.
The letter says November thirtieth. There's some people, like, that their mail got returned to me, and they changed their address, which they should have told me that. But I.
And they also know that they have it every year.
Right, and so.
It's usually important to their business to have it.
And I feel like the town, we want our businesses to succeed.
Of course.
Like, we also have a responsibility to the taxpayers to make sure that the businesses are paying for the services that they use in the town. And also, it's just good business practice, you know this bill's coming, you pay your bill.
So, what's the cost for yearly on-premise alcohol, all alcoholism?
Thirty-five hundred dollars.
Thirty-five hundred. So, what, can we give it a hundred dollar late fee? I mean, I don't think that's unreasonable as far as you can't meet the, or something.
How many people are in a week late?
Yeah, twenty-five dollars a month.
How many people on average are late?
I'll have, yeah, I'll have everybody, almost everybody cleaned up on December twelfth, which is how it tends to happen. That second meeting in December, I'll start putting in a lot of legwork to get everybody in. There's going to be at least five businesses that you will see in January.
The problem is you're spending your time doing this and changing them. And this is, for lack of a better term, a loss of revenue for town hall.
I think anybody after December and they go into January should have a hundred dollar.
I just want to clear though, all of our liquor licenses, that's not us, that's the ABCC. They're paid, and there's not a liquor license outstanding. They are paid. We're talking automatic amusement, skating rinks.
How much is automatic?
A hundred dollar per device.
Okay.
CommuVix, a hundred dollars, skating rinks, I think are two fifty. These are smaller ones. Our alcohol are all paid. The automatic amusements are actually a very high ticket when you add the fact there's twelve of them in a place. That's where that sort of becomes real substantial amounts of money.
So, automatic amusements, that's like arcades, that kind of stuff, arcade game?
Any type of game.
Yeah.
Here's, we're still doing a late fee though, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm about, for a hundred dollars.
Yeah. If they go beyond December fifteenth.
I can make a motion that we increase the late fee to a hundred dollars beyond January first.
Yep, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And you'll let them know, I'm sure.
Right.
Maybe that would be effective.
For next year, yes.
What?
I'm sorry, no?
Effective this year?
I was thinking that we would not become effective until December of 2019. I don't feel like, because there was not notice given, I don't feel like that would be a fair thing to do to anybody.
It's December fifth.
But if there, the bill already went out, right?
Yeah, so I already have my letter, the letter already states that, you know, if you have not paid, if everything interferes with the town, that we won't issue your license. Like, there's a, as much as I would like for everybody to pay a fee, I don't think it's.
Could we send a letter out, you said there was eighteen that are still outstanding?
I could do that. I could send a letter saying, you know, at their meeting on December fifth, the Select Board voted to assess a fee for all late payments. As we have not received your fee, we'll be assessing this payment as of January first, if we do not have your renewals.
We could do that to them, sure.
Okay, paperwork's not in good order.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, absolutely.
Perfect. Okay, water abatement, thirty-six Chumera Road, thank you.
Thank you both.
And Jen?
You can stay though, if you want.
I am staying. I'm just moving off camera because I can now.
Okay. Water abatement for Chumera Road, the water meter has been off. They got charged for sixteen dollars and ninety-five cents, so.
And this is from the collector's office?
It is.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anything else?
Just a reminder that we have a vote coming up on December eighteenth. Hopkins Academy, twelve to eight.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were done.
The sample ballot's available online in front of the webpage.
I just didn't know if there was anything in David's town administrator report that we didn't cover. Covered a lot of stuff, I don't know if there's.
Covered a lot of stuff, there are some updates, so let me go through them very briefly. The new thing is the FEMA flood insurance maps. FEMA is in charge of a upgrade of all the maps showing one hundred year, five hundred year flood planes in cities and towns along the Connecticut River watershed. In excess of eighty municipalities are involved. Last time we had our flood insurance maps done for us was back in nineteen seventies, nineteen eighties, and they were using twenty-foot contours. It's been improved to mapping technology. They're using two-foot contours now, and there's been a lot of development in the last, call it forty years. And they're using different hydrological modeling programs. So, we had a chance to look at the, and when I say we, it was the town building inspector, two members of the planning board, the fire chief and me, went to the engineers that are working for FEMA. We took a look at the proposed new maps, and there's a lot more flood plain in Hadley than currently. This affects people's ability to get flood insurance and process.
Is the crystal ball, there's going to be more or less?
Roughly more at this point.
More expensive, managed flood insurance, like how?
Right.
Yeah. So, we certainly want to do the right thing. If people are living at risk in a flood plain, we want to make sure that they're properly insured. We certainly don't want to overshoot and have people insured for floods who've never seen a flood, even in nineteen thirty-six and nineteen thirty-seven.
There's no ramp towering either, right? I mean, if you're in an existing location that suddenly goes into the flood plain, I'm assuming your carrier would then require you to get the flood insurance? Or is it only at the point of sale?
I don't know, that's a good question.
Thing is, it's not a sale because usually the mortgage companies require the certificate from FEMA saying yes or no, so.
Point of sale, or if you're doing a second mortgage, or reverse mortgage, or, you know, or any kind of major renovation to your house, people are going to be affected. About four or five years' time, we're going to be asked to adopt these new flood insurance maps at a town meeting. And there may be zoning changes that go along with that, so. Important that we engage with FEMA now because there will be a window that closes that we're able to give them feedback on as to the accuracy of the maps. We provided a lot of commentary, asking them to check the elevations of certain high grounds because we thought that that was, some of the flooding that they showed was excessive. We also gave them updates in terms of the work that we've been doing on the Connecticut River levee. So, the freeboard analysis, slope stability analysis, and the other work that we've done there. So, I've asked that the Piner Valley Planning Commission take this project on as a regional project, very much in the same way as the commission is guiding this through stormwater as a regional compliance effort. I hope that the discovery meetings that I went to, there were a lot of people who were not there that should have been there. Now, maybe there were subsequent meetings that I was not able to attend. But I think getting this information out to the towns is important. I also think that given the five-year time period in this, that we should make sure that there's somebody that's keeping, paying attention to compliance requirements over a five-year period. Boards come, boards go, leadership changes, you know, five years is a long time. Route nine widening project, it looks like they're going to be going out to bid in September 2021, so that's a year's delay in that project. Moody Bridge Road flat grant update, we've replaced a culvert on the westerly side of Moody Bridge Road in the project area. I think it was just yesterday that Billy brought me out to the other culverts to the east there and pointed out that they're beginning to collapse. So, we have temporarily closed Moody Bridge Road. And we're working with our engineers and the Conservation Commission to come up with some sort of plan. We might be using Chapter Ninety money in order to take care of those culverts there.
Does that affect access to the Soviet county?
It does not. We've closed the road after that. Nobody's landlocked there.
You can only access it from a road that's just there.
Yeah, okay.
Might be an issue in the spring with farming, but I think it'll be okay for the rest of the year.
We talked about the senior center, the library, Zaterka Park, Septic Truck. We've received bids for Hockenham Cemetery marker restoration, as well as a cemetery marker assessment for the other four cemeteries. That's been, those bids have been forwarded to the Cemetery Commission, and they'll make a recommendation to you in January. Dolus Marijuana, the planning board is working on them. The Board of Health has completed their health regulations, and they adopted them on November twenty-seventh. We had a training, Jennifer, you may want to talk a little bit about this. Uh, we had a training, Jennifer, you may want to talk a little bit about this, the website project that you've been working on. You had a training scheduled for November fifteenth. It was foul weather that night, so I think you rescheduled that training.
Um, we had the scheduled, we had the scheduled training during the day, and then we did have to cancel that night for the storm. I have not chosen another date yet for the boards and committees to come in the evening. December's, I feel like it's sort of a hard time to try to get people to show up, so I'm gonna send out an email asking for the first of the year. Um, they all have the ability to go ahead and watch some webinars at their own convenience and have the ability, they all have their logins, they can already sign in. So, um, that's where we are on that. I just, I think the ability to get people to come in in the next few days is limited.
We still have track for early January launch at the new site?
Yes. People are working on it.
Yeah.
I'm getting emails, people are asking questions, so I'm feeling pretty good about it, but, um, we'll say early in January.
And we got a, we got a safety grant from Maya, just came in a few minutes, hours ago. Fifty-five hundred dollars for trench safety equipment for DPW.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. And you did have town elections on December eighteenth again. Remind people, please get out and vote. Nice turnout at the... Fourth of November. Um, I just have a few announcements. Does anybody else have announcements for this evening? No? Um, I have some, uh, passings of our local residents. Helen O'Brien, Dennis Mian, who was active with the library, Leonard Gennatic, longtime Hadley, uh, person, Larry Bareska, brother of Kenny, and Ronnie. And Bruno Smigelzki, who did not live here but did graduate from Hopkins, and many people in town he was still very friendly with. So our condolences from the Select Board to all of these families on your loved ones' passing.
A little bit more upbeat, notably the fire department. Fire department is having a stuff the truck event, and that is being held on.
December sixteenth.
Sixteenth, thank you.
Sixteenth.
Sunday.
Sunday.
Sunday the sixteenth.
I think it's ten to one. So bring your toys. All right, we have an executive session this evening.
Well, you want me to read it?
Please.
Oh, make a motion that we go into executive session for the provisions of Mass Jean-Luc La, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One A Two, to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel. We're gonna be talking with the town administrator this evening, if the chair so declares.
I so declare that it would be detrimental to...
Oh, good.
I know, you gotta give me that to his...
Right.
Put that in my thing, detrimental to...
Public good, and could affect the town's bargaining position to have the discussion.
So be it. We're all called out.
Bill?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
And, uh, Chango?
Yes.
Night.
Night, everybody. See you next week.